Order, please stand with us will be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. After our prayer, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman at large George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together, Lord. Lord, I just want to bring the people of the Middle East over to you, Lord. There's so many innocent lives and innocent people, Lord Jesus, and I just pray that you would send your workers there to help them with all their medical needs and physical needs, Lord Jesus. Lord, we just pray that you'd be with us through our meeting in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the October seventeen, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next on our agenda is engineering work authorizations for the Snowden Lane and Nail Road projects. This is what I had briefed the board on recently, you know, as the Snowden district has developed in the, and obviously the Getwell traffic has, you know, increased as well. It's going to be ever, ever so important to improve our traffic grid in that area. We have pending developments on both of those roads, Snowden Lane, which is the road, you know, that goes by our soccer complex. So, south of Goodman Road on Snowden Lane is now a two-lane road. And so, there, there needs to be an expansion to make that three lanes and some other improvements in that area. So, we have agreements with developers where they pay half and the city pays half. Same type situation on Nail Road, just west of Getwell Road going towards Tulahoma. So, the Nail Road extension would actually push Nail Road through to Tulahoma. And obviously, you know, if you travel that area, you know, that would make a tremendous difference in allowing traffic to escape off of Getwell Road and get to Tulahoma. So, both of these projects have private developments that have arrangements where they pay fifty percent of this. So, the city needs to be preparing for our fifty percent. And obviously, the, the design has to be done. So, what we're proposing tonight is that we hire Civil Link to design both of these projects.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of Alderman Payne, a second Alderman Gallagher. And is there any other discussion, follow-up questions or anything? And Dan Cordell is in the audience if needed.
We already got that money to do that with.
Um, yeah, what we'll do on these, it's going to be a significant amount of money. And you know that I did not bring, I, I, last week I brought, I'll get that for all of us. But anyway, you know that I have a capital improvement spreadsheet that I, that we use frequently and, you know, as a working document. And so, I have the exact numbers on there, I'm sure Dan has it. But anyway, what we'll do as far as the funding is, by the time the majority of the money is needed, it'll be two thousand twenty-five. So, we'll have other debt rolling off. So, what we'll do is just use some of the available debt service for that. So, it should be a very easy to fund in that manner. Yeah, do you have the totals, Dan, projected totals?
The Nail Road section is roughly seven million total. Oh, that's both parts, all in. And then the Snowden Lane is right at three, two point eight million.
Yeah.
Is that, these agreements are complete, but we wouldn't start the construction phase of our portions until you'll, all the agreements are in place and funding's there. This is basically to get started with the design portion so that these numbers can be confirmed and that there's a, a plan in place to pull the trigger when they're ready.
Would we add storm sewer on May Boulevard, I mean, not May, sorry, Snowden Lane?
Is that, how's it?
Yes, sir, you're, um, you know, it's kind of tight. And
Right.
The typical section to go to three lane does go a little bit on the west side where the developments happen. But we're also going to be developing into the, the soccer field side.
Well, because it
Basically, a lot of room there is ditch, and so all that'll be potted. And so, you'll have curb gutter, a, a barrier which will help protect soccer fields. And basically, if you look at the, um, lights for the fields now and where they tie in, if you can imagine a slope from there going up and then there'll be a curb and gutter section.
Okay.
So, the ditch area will basically go away.
Mayor, what were you looking, were you still looking at going from Elmore to Sweeney, Sweeney to Tulahoma?
Yeah, the, the Elmore on Nail, the Elmore to Sweeney project was one that we, we put in the MPO plan years and years ago. And so, it was designed, Whitney's familiar with that, we had it designed. Then, we went through a, a cycle where the funding was not as much, you know, every four years, it's not as much money as we have. So, so it got put on the back burner as this, as growth started occurring more rapidly in other places. So, that's why it's been kind of put on the shelf, so to speak, but it is in the plan, it's still in the long-range plan to do that.
And we continue to look for other funding sources for that. At one time, we were looking at the bill, the twenty-five million dollar to combine all of it. And actually applied for it, we just didn't rate out on that one that, that year.
And we, we applied for a, Senator Wicker reached out to us a few years ago. There was a, a program and, and we used the entire Nail Road, uh, the extension connection and made application for federal money. We didn't get it, what was the name of that, Whitney, do you remember that?
I think that was the build program.
It had a different name than that, it was. It's okay, I thought maybe you, I can't recall either. But we did make up, so that, the, you know, the long-range plan for the city is eventually to run Nail, make Nail a east-west corridor.
It needs to.
Yeah, and so, we'll continue, but it was, I remember it was twenty-two million dollars is what the estimate was to do that.
Yeah, Roger, yeah, Roger Wicker brought it in, of course, but it was just too big of a project altogether, so we had to kind of weigh the fragment.
Yeah.
And that side was super expensive because of the red lines and the bridge. And this side had so much traffic because of Getwell Road, so it kind of prioritized that way versus the
But we still have the design, so we'll still keep that in the works. And like I said, that's still, we'll still keep looking, as Dan said, for other, um, different programs that could help us with the funding of it. Any other discussion about these two projects? And so, George, Alderman Payne, to answer your question, like, so the money, if you do half of that, you're looking at basically four point seven million, something like that. Um, we may tie in the, uh, one of the MPO projects that we have running the trail south to, um, south of Church Road, or to Church Road. We'll have some co-op money in that and the timing of all those will come together, so we may work all that together as one package bond issuance. But, um, we won't need to do that until two thousand twenty-five. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Next on the agenda is a resolution to amend our property maintenance code, Mr. Nick Manley, City Attorney.
I guess Mayor Board, this resolution was previously discussed at a prior meeting when we amended the property maintenance code. At the time, we took out a reference to trees and went back and revised that language to basically provide more clarity along with more specifics in regards to trees being about, or overgrown trees being a violation of the property maintenance code to limit it to, um, uh, where an overgrown tree or overgrown vegetation or other dead plant life can be, become infected by rats, mice, or other rodents, snakes, vermin, wild animals. Such that it threatens the endangerment of the community or the public life and safety of the citizens. So, that was the, uh, direction we took with it from the prop, from the discussion we had at the prior meeting, provide more clarity. And then also, um, so that it would not be as overbroad and be more specific in the violation itself. So, tonight it's being presented for approval. Once it's approved, it'll go into effect thirty days from now, assuming approval. So, uh, any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
So, Mayor, this is like we talked about before, the, the illustrations you showed us, like with the overgrown shrubs and
Yeah, yeah, sir, what we did is, um, we left the other and just added one to specifically address these. So, like, you know how we were talking about, um, bushes, you know, the height of the roof line and all that, we didn't touch that. And, um, we just added one that specifically addresses the trees. And then, so what, uh, what our code enforcement team was expressing concern about is not necessarily the trees like up against the house, but trees in general that are, that are not kept to where all these conditions that are in there, you know, apply. So, I sent you all those pictures that code enforcement sent to me showing you examples of why, why it's needed. And it, it affects public safety too, like, if, you know, for visibility, some, sometimes it, uh, you know, it can be an extreme, um, not just a, a barrier, but it, it, it becomes a, a visibility issue for public safety if someone's trying to, you know, address either a crime or a, um, or someone that's in need in a residence. So, that's why it affects, you know, that as well in addition to the, you know, the rodents and the, you know, the, the pests that, that like to make their home there. And, and again, just adding to that, you know, when you have a tree that's in that bad a condition, it's not just affecting that property, it's affecting the multiple properties that are neighboring that. Because as y'all know, if you have some of these pests, they're, they're not just staying in that yard, they're going, you know, to the other homes as well. I think Nick, uh, uh, wrote that. And I think keeping it separate like that, I think it perfectly addresses that without touching the other part of the maintenance code. So, any, uh, is there a motion to approve it or, or
I'll make a motion.
Further discuss?
I'll make a motion to amend the city property maintenance code.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Payne, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two change orders for fire station number five.
Uh, yeah, they, these are, uh, changes where they don't, they don't require action, these have already been approved based on the approval you've gave at the time of the, um, award of the contract. Now, we see the entries into the minutes, there are, um, three change orders, the first one is just increase the number of days, seventeen days. The second one is, uh, adding steel, um, as part of the mess, or, um, steel for the training room for an amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. And the last one is the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars for the block pan, block plan for the mezzanine, uh, which was affecting the steel door liners for the garage. Uh, so, these have already been approved and signed based on the authority previously gave. So, tonight, just make a note that these are being entered into the minutes tonight for fire station number five.
Okay, Andrea, you help us with that? Okay, next on our agenda is the Getwell Road Project Change Order.
Yeah, this, uh, change order, uh, we have the form, um, resolution as required by MDOT. It's, um, during the actual construction, it was noted that the, uh, certain locations with drainage pipe was needed to be, um, basically increased and bigger. Uh, these change orders have been approved by MDOT. And so, tonight, need to prove the change order in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars for the additional pipe as required for the project based on the actual conditions, um, after construction.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our municipal questionnaire.
Yeah, authorization tonight to, uh, to approve the question, uh, questionnaire as part of the city's audit, this is required. It has been completed, um, by D. McLean, um, and it is in compliance with, uh, the state laws and the statutes um, as far as the advertising and the questionnaire required. So, tonight, as part of our audit, we need authorization, um, to have the questionnaire approved and for signature through by the mayor.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is approval of our bank plus, uh, bank plus agreements and pricing.
These, uh, what the, um, what we're wanting to do this year, what's been suggested this year is, is part of the box, purchasing the boxes that, um, we did last year is to offer a, a three-year contract and a one-year contract, um, for those purchases. Uh, so, the three-year contract, you would have, um, be allotted for three years for the purchase of the, uh, of the boxes at the Bank Plus Amphitheater. And you would have a better, um, rate over those three years for the, uh, per seat show. Um, as opposed to the one-year agreement, which would just be obviously for the one year. But it sets these form agreements set forth, the, um, requirements along with the conditions, uh, for the, uh, uh, boxes and the price and the timing of payments. So, it provides more, um, stability along with consistency and, um, structure for our program at the amphitheater. Uh, so, tonight, the, the, um, request is to approve the, um, payments, I mean, the pricing for each box for, uh, the three-year contract and the one-year contract, along with approving the form contract that's presented for the one-year agreement and the three-year agreement. And then, as those are signed individually for those boxes, they'll be entered into the minutes similar as we did, similar as we did with the, uh, artist agreements in the past. So, uh, happy to answer any questions, I think this will provide, um, a good way forward and provide also with, um, a, a good, a good contract to head off any issues and or complaints or, uh, uh, that may come up based off of not having a contract in place for those boxes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Then having incentive, you know, for people, that's, that's the, one of the big things, you know, from a city's perspective is having that incentive, uh, to renew, you know, for three instead of, instead of just one. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the resolution to ratify the emerg, ratify an emergency purchase for our utilities department.
Yeah, this emergency purchase is for their, uh, uh, bucket truck. We've had this, uh, the utilities departments have the same issue as the police, um, have, they'll actually getting, uh, equipment, even seat bids. Based on the information that's been received and the correspondence and letters that have been received by the, uh, utilities department. Uh, if you went to bid for a truck, you're looking anywhere from eighteen months, to some cases, three, three years to get the truck. Um, there was one truck that came available, um, in Waco, Texas, that, uh, we, that was found out about by the utilities department. And so, it's, bucket truck is needed now. And, um, so due to the uncertainty of actually being able to get a truck when going to bid, it's recommended tonight under their power in a thirty-one, seven thirteen K, the Mississippi Code to authorize the purchase of the truck in an amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, so that that truck can be in and will have the truck without having to, um, have the uncertainty of waiting a couple of years, um, for actually obtaining a truck through bids.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? I think Nick said it mostly best, but the other thing, just reminding everyone that, um, having to wait two, three years, it could put us in a, I mean, we're, we, it wouldn't be the end of the world if it happened today, but, uh, we could be in a situation where we didn't have, uh, the other one that we're, that we, that we, is currently functional, and it would be a, uh, since sincere emergency. So, um, I, I do think it is a, it is an emergency purchase. And thank you to Ray Humphrey for doing the legwork on that and finding this truck in Waco, Texas. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is authorization for the annual certification for each year, asset, and the asset forfeiture program with the Department of Justice.
Uh, this is the annual certification program for the, um, with DOJ for any forfeiture funds that were used. Um, the only thing that's changed from this years, from last year's, um, certification, this year's certification is the firm who did our audit, um, which is Watkins Ward and Stafford. Um, and then we submit this electronically, uh, but the, um, uh, we didn't, this year, we did not use any seized funds, um, from this program. You know, it's noted in the, uh, annual certification report, um, which has been signed by Chief Moore and now will be signed by the mayor, um, cert, for, uh, submission to the DOJ. So, tonight, we need authorization for the mayor to sign this certification report as required by the DOJ.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is approval for a rental variance.
This variance is requested for by, consistent with the city's facility use policy for an event at the Snowden House on November twentieth where alcohol be served. So, due to your policy, you have to have approval of the board for that. So, tonight, need authorization for that rental variance for the event on November twentieth at the Snowden House.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is discussion of a proposed, um, change to our commercial vehicle ordinance.
Yeah, and this is obviously not up for vote tonight, it's just for discussion purposes and, and talking with, um, the, the mayor and, uh, Whitney and the land director and getting the board's thoughts on this. There's been a proposal just for review and discussion and comment on the, um, commercial vehicle ordinance, which says that no commercial vehicles other than pickup trucks with standard factory-installed pickup beds, private passenger vehicles used for commercial purposes, school buses, trailers, exceeding twenty feet in actual bed lane tractors or heavy equipment shall be parked in the residential zone of the driveway, yard street, except for immediate delivery or service and delivery purposes. Um, this has obviously been revised from the one we have in place now. Um, so, uh, I know there's been discussion amongst the board on this issue as well. Uh, so, tonight, uh, I think the, the goal was, and, um, obviously, I'll defer to the mayor on this on how we want to handle it, but get the board's thoughts and direction on this ordinance and, um, what changes, if any, or revisions along with timing and, uh, see how everybody wants to perceive. But like I said, this is not, we can't, we can't consider it for approval tonight because it's for planning ordinance which requires advertisement, so it's purely for discussion. So, um, any questions or thoughts or comments are obviously welcome by anyone.
Do we have, can we put the proposed writing up there?
Uh, I've got it, uh, in an email form, but I can, uh, it's, uh,
It's actually in the packet, but it's
It's, it's in the packet.
Yeah, it is, it's up there.
Go back up to, uh,
Yeah, I'm looking.
Yeah, there it is.
No, 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 go up, you're going down. Go back to the beginning. Close to the beginning. I think it's after the budget truck convergence purchase.
Go up. Can you all move up, see if you can find that for us, please?
It's right after the maintenance code.
So, while they're looking for that, I'll go ahead and take this time just to kind of update the discussions that we had. So, we've had citizens that have reached out to us and we had a, a large ordinance, public meeting, uh, a couple summers ago. And we addressed a lot of ordinances that had become outdated. And, uh, y'all may remember, and, and we made a bunch of changes. And one of them was the commercial vehicle ordinance. And we thought we'd hammered it down, it was working well, but the, the problem is that as truck manufacturers have made adjustments, even in two years, uh, really, the, the key indicator to determine what's a commercial vehicle, what's a personal vehicle, was gross vehicle weight rating. And so, we based our last ordinance on that rating. And even insurance, that's how insurance policies differentiate what's a commercial vehicle, what's personal. And, but what we learned, and our citizens pointed this out and have a great point, is that you can have personal vehicles, pick, you know, really, that are pickup trucks that, that have a same, uh, GVWR as, as commercial vehicles now. So, it really doesn't make sense that you, that you decide on what's a commercial vehicle and what's a personal vehicle based on that. So, what we did is just, and again, like Nick said, we're just, this is what we've done with it, just to start the talk with y'all to make sure we get this right. Because this is a very touchy issue, this is an issue that you're not, you can't make everybody happy. The two things that we're juggling with this is if you allow commercial vehicles unlimited to park in residential neighborhoods, uh, you get everything. You get things that are just simply undesirable from a property value standpoint. Um, you'll have a lot of citizens that will echo that. You'll have a lot of citizens that will echo that. They'll say, I don't want to see that, I don't want to see that when I walk out my front door and in the driveway. So, to preserve your property values in your residential neighborhood, you've got to have an ordinance that addresses commercial vehicles. But then on the flip side of that, like I said, the other hand that's juggling is, you know, we want to be conscientious of the fact that, you know, a lot of people make their living, then they have to drive a, a company vehicle home. And so, we don't want to create unnecessary hardships for those people also. So we want to, you know, if it's not something that's really bringing down property values, we want to be as lenient as we can to help our citizens that need to bring a, you know, a commercial vehicle home. So y'all get the two things that we're juggling there and why we're doing it. So, where, where we landed with that is taking out the gross vehicle weight rating. And instead, let me read it, and I'll just kind of get into this again. I know Nick read it, but let me, I may stop and just kind of add emphasis where we changed it. So, to start, we decided in a residential zone, we want to start by restricting commercial vehicles because we know that brings property values down. When you allow, most, or a lot of HOA covenants, they, they restrict all commercial vehicles. A lot of them won't even let you put a, a sticker on a private passenger automobile. That's how serious they, they view, you know, the effect it has on property values. So, starting with this, no commercial vehicles, other than pickup trucks, with standard factory-installed beds or private passenger vehicles used for commercial purposes. Let's, let me stop right there. So what that would do is it would, it would stop the argument of somebody having a, you know, an, an F three fifty or a, you know, Dodge thirty-five hundred or something like that, which is a huge vehicle. But it's, it's still built with a standard truck and it's not, it's not really any more detrimental to property values than a, than a F one fifty. It's, it's a pickup truck. So, with a, with a, a factory-installed standard bed or private passenger vehicles that are used for commercial purposes. So like you see real estate agents, you see, you know, insurance people, you see, a lot of professional people will have a vehicle that has a, it's a private pa, it's a car SUV van, but it could have a sticker on it or something like that. It's still not massive, it's not bulky, you know, even though it's not perfect from a desirability standpoint for property values. It's really not obnoxious, it's, you know, we, so this is giving lenience to that. And then obviously, that would be the exception, but you would still exclude school buses. You know, if you want to put a school bus in a driveway, I don't think I have to explain that. Extra-long trailers that are used, you know, for commercial purposes, tractors, heavy construction equipment, and all that would still be restricted. So really, you're being a little more lenient in that you're allowing larger, heavier pickup trucks, as long as they have a standard bed. If somebody, now this still would restrict, you know, your double-axle stuff, you know, big, huge, flatbed, commercial trucks and all that. It would still restrict that. There's not a way to make this perfect where it accomplishes both goals. And so, that's where the discussion starts, so it's up to y'all to decide what you want to do. But I would, again, I would challenge everybody to consider that those are, I mean, obviously, we want to be lenient with the people that need to bring their vehicle home, but if you start allowing anything in a, in a residential zone, you, you are hurting property values, you are.
But the majority of, of that, of what you were talking about is, is already restricted in our code of ordinances, correct?
A, a lot of it is, to some degree, this is act, I mean, this is more lenient because before, they would be restricted, like the, you know, the big, the big vehicles, the flatbed trailers and all that, were restricted based on the, on their weight. So like if they were designed to have a, you know, a large hauling capacity, they were restricted on the other one as well. What this does is, just makes more sense as far as the, you know, what it's used for. Like, it's not just, you know, restricting it because of the weight of it or its hauling capacity. It's restricting it based on what it's designed to do. Like, if, if it comes out of the factory with a flatbed trailer and a double axle, I mean, there, it was built for commercial reasons. And, uh, so this would still restrict some modifications to vehicles that are lighter, that may have that flatbed truck or the, you know, box, you know, the enclosed bed or something like that. It would still, it would restrict those because there, so there are a few situations that this could restrict some that weren't restricted previously, just based on the weight, the weight capacity.
Well, my concern is some of the, two fifties and twenty-five hundreds, three fifties and thirty-five hundreds may have a bed, a flatbed on the back of the truck, where they may be a welder, they have a welding system on the back. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with not being on the street, but I'd be okay with them parking it in the driveway.
Yeah, well, and that's kind of, that's why I made the comment earlier, you're not gonna, I don't know how we
Right.
address that, because if you allow.
I understand what we're trying to limit.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we have a lot of folks that can drive one of those type, you know, type vehicles. And, okay, now, they're in the same situation as someone driving an eighteen-wheeler and they've got to go find a place to park it.
Yeah.
Just to go home.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're talking about a truck, yeah, okay, you may want, you know, you don't want it on the street, but if they've got it, you know, backed up in their, you know, side yard or their driveway and they've poured concrete for it, you know, it's a different story.
Yeah.
Well, that's really a service truck. I mean, if it's a service truck, that's a different issue to me.
Well.
Because service people are on-call twenty-four-seven.
I agree with that, but here's the thing. When you, when you say factory-installed pickup beds, not all of them are factory-installed.
You have to define factory-installed, because like, we used to buy trucks.
I agree with that.
That would just not come with a bed, and then we would mount work beds on it.
I, I agree with that.
Note that, not to get into.
What factory are we talking about?
Yeah, not to be, get into semantics of it, but are we really getting into, but that's what it said, when it says standard factory-installed pickup bed, that's where it's addressing that it is truly a pickup bed.
And most of us are thinking pickup bed is the normal pickup bed.
Right.
But, you know, I'm talking about, you know, either like a plumbing service truck, you know, that may have the boxes alongside, you know, really nice, you know, bed.
On-call people.
Yeah, but it's not a, you know, factory-installed pickup bed.
Yeah, you're.
Or it's a flatbed, like, you know, we've got some, I think we have some trucks in, or utility department that are, you know, twenty-five hundred or two fifty or three fifty or thirty-five hundred, and they've got a flatbed with a welder and, you know, air compressor on the back.
But that's not a pickup bed.
No, it's not. I agree.
Yeah.
But, but they can't take it home and park it in their driveway?
Well, now, there is, in this ordinance above this, there, there is some other language that addresses emergency vehicles. Like, there, can, can we go north? Or, no, we don't have it on this.
It is, it's on the top.
Do you have it on here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In our current ordinance, it all, in addition to this, it does give exceptions to emergency vehicles, like vehicles that are on the to, city, like the police tow thing, because time is such an issue with that.
It's not going to be on this.
Yeah, well, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, but not going to be on that.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's not on this, sir.
Yeah, and then it also addresses like what you're talking about, like an emergency vehicle, like intergy or power company, something like that.
Or.
Yeah.
City of South Hating, you tell them.
But what about, I mean, you know, what about a plumber, like, you know, like Alderman Jerome's saying, that's got a truck similar to that, that's on-call twenty-four-seven? Uh, who, you know, may not be able to easily get to his business, you know, off Lamar and Memphis, you know, to get back, you know, to somebody's house who's flooding or something like that.
Yeah, but back, are you talking about a pickup bed that has like toolboxes built in, or what do you, are you talking about like a, I mean, there's all kinds of.
I know, I know. It, it's so tough, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate what Whitney has done so far with this. I mean, there, there's so much that, I mean, you can get really deep.
Yeah.
You know, I guess the best thing is, you know, look at some pictures of different beds and, and kind of go from there. You know, nobody wants a big, you know, box van out there. But at the same time, if this guy's got a really, you know, a plumber, I'm using plumber, and I'm going to use our utility department, you know, truck as an example. You know, it's a flatbed, but this guy's stuff, you know, mounted to the back of it.
It's got toolboxes on it, yeah.
Yeah. Toolboxes, a welder, air compressor, you know, and it's a duly. And I understand not one, that it'd be parked on the street, but at the same time, can we not allow that to be, you know, in the driveway? And at the same time, even if it's not duly, but it's a, you know, two fifty, twenty-five hundred, three fifty, thirty-five hundred plumbing truck, and some of the newer ones, you know, it, it's a pickup truck with a toolbox bed on the back. Even, you know, single tire on the back. Well, this would prevent that because that's not a factory-installed bed.
No, it doesn't say that you couldn't, can we go back, please, again? It's not saying that you couldn't add things to it, it's saying that it's a standard pickup bed. So like, I mean, you'll have a lot of people, even just for personal use, that will add, you know, toolboxes and, and a lot of stuff like that to a standard bed pickup.
I'm going to have to find a picture sent to you.
Yeah, but that's kind of where I was going, like.
I'm, I'm going to have to.
And, uh, so, I'll say it again, this is challenging.
Well, I know. And that's why I'm glad we're discussing it.
Yeah.
Because it does affect a lot of people.
It does. But I will, I will tell you this, because I've taken the phone calls, both sides.
Yeah.
In every neighborhood. But there are people that, Whitney, you, you know, they're, whatever you decide, they're like, why are you allowing that? That's affecting our property values and.
No, no, I agree. And actually, I think we're being really, you know, forgiving in the twenty-feet length of trailers, actually.
Well, the problem is, you have so many, excuse me, subdivisions in our city that don't have HOAs. I mean, that.
Right.
You know, and like, that's a good idea in a perfect world because like the HOAs are much more restrictive, like.
Yeah.
I know a lot of HOAs, like I said, that won't let you put a magnet on it.
Yeah, but honestly, the HOAs don't have anywhere in the, the enforcement power that we do.
You want a vet?
Oh, they do.
No, they don't. No, they don't.
They do, I mean.
They have a lot of enforcement.
No, they don't. Only, only if they can afford a, a lawyer.
Let me jump in for a second here.
You have an HOA to get a lawyer.
My thoughts on this are, I mean, I can sit in, in my living room and look at my front door and see, you know, vans the same size as the Amazon vans, you know, but they're plumbers and that kind of stuff. They look, vehicles, brand-new, look sharp, that kind of stuff. I mean, I'd like to see us to have this ordinance to allow work vans that are, you know, and, you know, we could even say they must be maintained, you know, that we don't want a bunch of broken-down stuff and, you know, stuff that looks ratty. But I mean, I think most of the companies that have these people that are on-call, they're nice, they're nice equipment. I think with, as far as the pickup trucks are concerned, I'd like to see, just driving around my neighborhoods, I mean, I've seen a lot of the work beds, like you're talking about, the flat beds with the boxes on each side of them or stuff like that. I mean, I think that, you know, we all agree, we don't want these commercial vehicles parking on the street because that's one of our biggest problems because they become a hazard. But, you know, we don't want to limit our citizens from their ability to work, you know, and we have, and we get, it just like, in Colonial Hills, I bet you, I've got twenty-five or thirty plumbers that live there, and they drive home every day, they're on-call twenty-four hours a day. So they have to respond. So, I mean, I'd like to see us rework this to where it's, where it addresses that. It says trucks with work beds and vans, and work vans, you know, and, and we know when we're talking about work vans, it could be the same size of like a, an Amazon.
No way, Amazon delivery, that's a delivery cargo van. That's not.
But I mean, but, but they use those, I'm talking about the size of it, it's what, it's what I'm talking about.
You're talking about Sprinter vans, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you know what I'm talking about, that size there. You know, I, I mean, I think we all agree, we don't want box trucks in there, we don't want, you know, eighteen-wheeler trucks in there. You know, we want something that fits on your driveway. I don't even have a problem, I think we ought to, to address it and maybe say, you know, this vehicle must be parked fifteen feet from the street. We don't want them parking at the very end of the driveway, you know, where they're, they're blocking traffic and people are trying to do stuff. But, I mean, I think we all are in the same place where we, you know, we pretty much have the same vision. We just want to, we just got to get it down to where we can make it workable, to where it's not going to be a hassle for our code guys to have to deal with and the hassle for the citizens. I think if we were to, to do it like I'm talking about, I think it would address probably ninety-five percent of what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that, and that's why we're, we want to achieve that goal, but the question then would be, well, first of all, let me state this. I, I, I agree, I think a lot of people agree that on-street and the driveway are two things, but that's not the only thing we're trying to address here.
Right.
If it's visible, there, there are many citizens in this city that are, that's not appealing to them. They don't like that.
Right.
And they're going to expect this board and, and me to advocate for something that protects our property values. But when you get specifically into, and I get what you're saying, if you got a, somebody who has a, and that's kind of what, when it says, this designed for private passenger use, like there's a lot of plumbers and, uh, commercial people that use vans that are not like a Sprinter van, they're not that. They're a standard vehicle size that they're converted to that. And I would agree that that's not detrimental to property values. But how do you want to differentiate between that and the massive Sprinter van? Do you want to do that by size or height or length?
That's the challenge of this. I, I'm, I'm glad we're talking about it, because, you know, that's the challenge of this.
And the Sprinter van, I think, is, is the new go-to with, I mean, I like, I mean, our, our guy, Advanced Safe and Lockman, he went to a Sprinter van. Matheson Security, Pete's had it, had a Sprinter van for, you know, fifteen years.
They're made for commercial purposes.
Yeah, he's, you know, he's had one for fifteen years and parks it in his driveway every night. You know, and the, the, I think another challenge would be, if we do prohibit these things here, where are they going to park at? I mean, you know, we've got a couple of commercial lots that people are parking eighteen-wheelers in, and we see those things are getting broken into over there because it, so it's a nightmare that way. So, I mean, you know, uh.
Well, and the answer to a lot of that is, uh, most companies have, and I, I understand that some people are on-call, I, I get that. But most companies are going to have a place where they, they have their vehicles parked. So like you can, it may not be as convenient as you want. Uh, and then again, just being fair, that, you know, whatever your profession is, you have to consider that before you, you know, buy that house or go in that profession. You know, it's not, um, again, it just, I, I'm just trying to tell you about both, you're going to have citizens that are going to be like, man, y'all, I can't believe you're allowing that. And then you're going to have some, and I'm sympa, I'm sympathetic to that too. I mean, I don't ever want to create a difficulty where there's not a solution for somebody. But I do think a lot of people have solutions, they just don't want to do, it may not be as convenient for them as, as parking it in a, in a residential neighborhood. But, um, but I was just trying to move the ball down the field a little bit, like, so you're saying advanced of this, but do we want to put a size restriction? How do we, how do we, um?
Got to have a length restriction, yeah, I mean, I'd say a length.
And height?
Yeah, length and height will probably take care of that.
And the other thing is, um, I got to be fair to my code enforcement office, we got to have an ordinance that's simple, I mean, you know, they can't get out there with a measuring stick, you know, they're going to be able to, you know.
They kind of do now with trailers from the curb.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, a trailer's a little different, and instead of, you're talking about height and length and, I mean, you know, it's, it's got to be a practical ordinance for us to be able to manage it fairly, you know. But some possibly advanced, but possibly with a length and height. And so, talk to me, y'all, a flatbed, big, big bed trucks with dual axles? Are we okay with that or no?
Not dual axled.
But you have no problem with a flatbed truck?
A duly.
I think we need to call them a work bed, because there's a difference between a flatbed and a work bed.
Let's talk about a single-axle duly that has a flatbed on it, that has maybe a welder, air compressor, or something like that mounted to it.
Yeah, so how, how do we, again, how do we differentiate that and, uh, put parameters on that?
Anything over two axes?
But that still doesn't change the bed, so no problem with a, with a, a flatbed, just a general flatbed truck in the?
If it's a single axle.
I think we, I, I think, to me, to me, a flatbed and a work bed are different.
With a certain length.
A flatbed, you can put stuff on top of, you can load stuff, like the records and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, you put a work, a work bed is going to, it would cover the, the racks on each side of it with the, you know, the cabinets they have to work with and that kind of stuff. Uh, so, I mean, I think, I mean, I think our, our code guys would know what a work bed is if you said, you know, it could have a work bed on the back of it, but it just can't be.
It's too vague. It's going to have to be described. It's too vague. And we, we want to make it easier for them. We don't want to make it like, eh, eh.
Well, I mean, it, it may take a little bit of work, it may not be solved tonight.
No, no, I'm just, like I said, I'm just trying to move the ball down the field. We don't have to solve it tonight, but.
I'm with you.
But we got to hear from y'all, like what your thoughts are, you know.
I don't like them on the street because they take up so much room, especially the, you know, the, the duly's, whether it's a, you know, standard bed or a flatbed or a service, you know, truck. It takes up room, and some of our streets are kind of narrow. So.
So we agree, we agree no dual axles, y'all?
Yeah.
Yeah, no dual axles.
But y'all, from what I'm hearing, y'all don't have a.
No.
Y'all think a flatbed work truck is okay?
Yeah.
Well, the mayor, would it be inappropriate for us to ask Robert what he, what he would, since he's here, he, he does code? I mean, ask us what he think, what, does he understand what we're talking about or how he would describe it?
Yeah, but we're going, we're going to do that. We're, what we're going to do is have a, another meeting, like, we had this one just to, uh, with, with Nick and with Whitney, and so we definitely take our Roberts input and everybody's input.
I'll commit to get some pictures together of different beds, you know, what I'm talking about, so everybody's got a visual.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
But no on, uh, no on enclosed beds, your typical, your bread snack machine trucks, your Wonder Bread truck.
Yeah, no box, those are box, what do they call them, step vans?
Enclosed beds.
Right.
Zero.
No enclosed beds.
Enclosed beds are a little.
You know, Golden Flay, Fredo Lane, no.
Snap-on tools. The height regulation too.
Look, Snap-on live, that's their, that's their business.
Yeah.
They live out of that van.
Yeah.
They, I think, they used to call them step, they used to call them things step vans.
Until you're okay with that?
Look, I, I don't think it's a good idea for the city to put restrictions that, 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 that adversely affect people's ability to
Make a living.
Make a living.
Amen, I agree with you.
And to prosper and to pay taxes and to do all the stuff that.
But there has to be some parameters. What if I'm a self-employed tractor-trailer operator, you okay with me parking that in your driveway next door?
No, I'm not.
What's that, you, so you see where we're going, we're trying to find a happy medium in there. Because you're. What's that, you, so, you see where we're going, we're trying to find a happy medium in there, cause you're a ring of both.
I don't know where it is.
Yeah, that's like I said, it's, it's a challenge.
With, with, with the bread trucks, chip trucks, I'd be okay with that, if they put it in their yard, not on the street.
No, I'm not good with it. Again, it's too, it's, it becomes too ambiguous at that point. Like, and Snap-on Tools, I'm gonna say this, most Snap-on Tool guys nowadays do not park their trucks at home, because they have inventory in their trucks, they don't fit it in the garage, so they go, they go find someplace where they can put it in secure lock.
Where do, where do they securely put that Snap-on truck?
I don't know, Bob's telling you, because we have.
Other than at their house.
You got any, any, uh, no, seriously, to help us, we're not gonna sell this tonight, but, but again, let's make the conversations not useful for helping us uh, make amendments to this and bring it back, what questions here in this, Whitney, do you, what are you hearing?
I mean, the main thing from, from my guy's standpoint is to simplify, make it, uh, easily.
Black and white.
I mean, it's never really black, right now we're going with tonnage, and a lot of times, the only way they can determine if it's out of violation or not, or somebody tries to refute the fact that it is, we have to have him allow us to open it or check aside, and a lot of times that's a volatile situation, or upset situation, that we don't wanna be involved with, so, that, you know, the clear, more clear cut we can make it, for the officers, the better off we're gonna be. Um, and, and, and Mary's right, there's, there's two sides of the coin, we hear both sides of it, and it's about half and half. Uh, you've got the ones that are mad about the neighbor boys coming home with their stuff, and you've got the ones that are saying, this is my lifeline, this is what I gotta do, if you might be shorting somewhere else, it's, it's more money for me, so, it's just that in-between thing, but I, I know the guys, the worst problem we're having right now is just interpreting it, uh, and, and everybody wants to fight about, well, mine's not over two tons, mine's not this, I don't use this for this, this is just my personal tool truck, and so we get into this argument constantly. We just need it simplified, uh, one way or the other, whatever's decided, we just need it easily, uh, easy to read, and easy to interpret for the officer's standpoint.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hearing, and, uh, I'm hearing some leniency on, you know, the type of bed and things like that, and your, um, you know, your, uh, your, your, your tradesman, you know, that we wanna give some leniency, but, but we don't feel like we can do dual axles and big enclosed, um, you know, box trucks, that kinda thing, am I hearing y'all right?
Yes.
And then what else, what are we forgetting about, what else, um, would that necessarily apply to, can y'all think of anything else that would be a, a one-off, or, uh, you know, something like that?
That's the bed I was talking about.
Cause that's how it used to be, I mean, again, I hate to keep using insurance reference, but that's the world I grew up in, um, you know, insurance policies, they, they make it black and white, as much as, I mean, with this they do, a lot of things are not, but with this, they say, hey, if it's this gross vehicle weight, it is a commercial vehicle, and you have to pay more money for the insurance, if it's this, it's a personal vehicle, and so they try to, so this is an issue that affects, you know, cities, but also affects contracts and insurance, and even, uh, I was talking to Robert Booth, he's a, you know, an expert on, on, uh, commercial vehicles, and Robert's telling me that like even the state charges more, if you have a certain, uh, tell me that again, I don't, I can't say it like you said it, Robert, if it's a certain parameter, you have to pay for commercial tags, and it's.
The more you choose, oh, you have to buy a tag, and it costs more.
Yeah.
You have to buy the insurance.
But again, I'm like Alderman Payne, I, I'm with you, and I, this is one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Standard, like a standard duly truck, or whatever you need, or F two fifty, you get a BTN tag, you know, ten thousand pounds a day, then if you move up from there, well, over sixteen, or eighteen, you know, you have to pay the difference in the tag and the insurance, oh.
Yeah.
Sell a tag, rate it.
But so what we were trying to do is like, again, do some deductive reasoning here and try to, what is the goal that we're trying to achieve? It's, it's not the weight of the vehicle, even though, like I said in the past, and like Robert's talking about, the weight of the vehicle, load capacity, determine, is it commercial, personal, but we're trying to look at it from a, a property value standpoint, is it, is it a negative, you know, is, what is a negative? We all agree that a, a massive bread truck that blocks the view, that's, I mean, we know people have to make their living with bread and, and, uh, Frito Lay, chips, yeah, I mean, but still, it's, the proper place for that is not in a residential driveway, it's just, it's just not.
Mayor, I'll send you a couple of pictures of examples I was talking about on your phone, just text them to you, you know, uh, I think we, you, I know one of the concerns we probably he- hear a lot is, you know, a lot of these trucks, you know, they're cranking up in the middle of the night, that kinda stuff, and making, you know, so noise is, is a concern. Uh, we need to, you know, probably need to think about that, you know, what do we, what do we have here, and what is it doing? I think that was one of the big concerns with the wreckers all the time, you know, leaving, and all, all different times of the night, they'd crank, crank those diesels up and, you know, wake up half the neighborhood, that kinda stuff.
But you know, if you, uh, again, I'm just pointing out how challenging this is, if, if you got a F two fifty with a diesel engine, it's the same thing, and, and a lot of people have those just for personal use, you crank that thing up.
You got an entire street that's hearing it as soon as it cranks out.
You don't hear me anymore, I can go crank them out of you, and no one's gonna get.
I know, you ain't heard about F one fifty with straight five. Hey, maybe, hey, maybe not yours.
Dumping trash at three thirty in the morning, yeah. When they come to pick up the trash bins, that, that's a bigger issue to me than this.
I mean, we might get it also put in there, you know, that if you, you know, it's not routines of it, like it, emergency on-call, like you said before, earlier, you know, we addressed it up there, you know, in some other spots, you know, these, you don't wanna just necessarily have to have everybody in the brother, but if, if these things are used to be where they're actually on-call, to make emergency response calls.
Well, that, that's a good idea, but the problem with that is it's, there's no way to police that, like anybody, there's no, it's impossible. What is in our current ordinance is if it's a South Haven police wrecker, which is easily verifiable for us, or if it's like a, a entergy, a, something that's a serious matter where the people are losing their power, you gotta have some leniency there, but. Anyway, I think we probably need to move on tonight, but I think I've gotten some good feedback from y'all, so what we'll do is we'll, um, uh, we'll go back to the drawing board and try to tweak that a little bit, and, uh, and then we'll try to get something, uh, back in, in front of everybody that meets, you know, kind of our goals that we talked about tonight.
I also just wanna be very careful though, because, I mean, uh, there's a difference in somebody that's got a take-home vehicle, that's a perk, it's part of their job, you know, and, and that's a big deal for a lot of people that are working, I mean, to have a take-home vehicle, and you're not spending all that in gas, that, that's fantastic. But also, I wanna be careful not to affect the people that whose vehicle is their office, is their, is their entire job, whether it be an independent plumber, an independent HVAC person, or a Snap-on dealer, somebody, or locksmith, somebody who doesn't have, you know, a, a, a business necessarily that they go to, I mean, they, everything they have is within their truck, and it's kinda hard to go drop it off somewhere when everything they have is in their truck, their entire business is in their truck, and you kinda want that at your house so that you've got a better, better way of, you know, a be- better eye to keep on it. That's my concern.
Yeah, I get you, and just coincidentally, my dad's career was Snap-on Tools, he, my dad was a finance, he was the credit manager for Snap-on Tools, that was his career job. So the tools that are in those trucks, my dad was the one that helped them get the tools, so I'm very familiar with that business model, and I can tell you that Snap-on dealers had to look for a certain area to buy their house, if they knew they were gonna have that truck, in most cities, yeah.
Is it, it, will this be zone, will zoning affect this, say if they were in an agricultural zone in South Haven?
Well, this is residential zone, Whitney, Albert Thomas, residential zone.
Only residential?
There's commercial vehicles, tractors, eighteen-wheelers, twelve-wheelers, all that's allowed in that zone.
But I will tell you, and not to pick on Snap-on, cause again, it's what fed me for many years, but.
Well, I'm familiar with it, that's why, uh, when it was brought up, I go, whoa, that's, that's a big deal.
I'll tell you this, if you're gonna allow Snap-on Tool trucks, we don't have anything else to talk about, we, we can just.
They're big.
We can scrap this and just allow, uh, uh, well, just school buses maybe, and, uh, eighteen-wheeler, uh, tractor trailer rigs, and then we're slick, we'll have it ready next meeting, but, yeah, I'm just saying, it's, yeah, it's, that gets a little, that, that's, you know, and again, I'm picking on them.
I know, I, I've just got heartburn over when, when your, when your business is your vehicle.
I do too.
Do y'all have a problem with, uh, limiting the distances, it has to be so far from the street, parking the driveway, like fifteen feet?
Says you can't have any vehicles within twenty feet of the, in the drive.
That's just a public safety, a visibility issue, but this, and again, not to keep hammering this home, but this is a, it's a property value issue, like, so even if it's not on the street, if it's in the driveway, I, I can tell you that you have a large number of citizens, um, and I know we're joking, but if, if we allow that tonight, I promise you tomorrow, you, you, you'll hear from them, you know? So we, it's, that's why I use the analogy, it's, I mean, you're juggling it, I mean, it's, gotta try to find a, some balance in there somewhere that's fair. But anyway, we can, um, I think y'all, um, given some good feedback tonight, and is there anything, Whitney, can you, is there any other question?
No, I mean, I think we're good, I mean, I just need to see where we land, and, and make sure it's it's easier for us, for the guys to enforce, and make a clear cut way for the people.
Yeah, Robert, did you have some input?
I'm just gonna say, in, in the, the layout that they were talking about, with the flat bed, and the duly, rear end, back, that's ninety-five percent of your repo wrecker trucks. F three fifties, four fifties, they're single axle, dual axle trucks, but they're wrecked, they're off, they're working.
Well, we don't allow them. Correct?
Well, what he's saying is, he's saying, just taking the dual axle doesn't stop that.
Well, the length will get that, though, the length, yeah, the length will take care of that, we gotta put a length on there.
Yeah, I mean, are we, I mean, we can get, I mean, we can, we can get wordy, we can, I mean, the attorneys like to over, no offense, Nick, but they, they like to get crazy with the words, so we can definitely let them go, but, but again, like Whitney's saying, it gets, after a while, it gets challenging, like to, to apply, you know, if you're having to do this number of things, but, but anyway, we'll, that's some good input, we, let us work on this some more, and we'll keep, we'll keep working on it. Before we move on, anybody got anything else specific? Okay, all right, next on our agenda is the resolution for sanitation fees.
Just the fees that haven't been paid, authorized leaning, or a hole in the tag, it's paid.
What he said, I'm gonna get motion.
Okay, we have a motion, Alderman Hoots, is there a second, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Is there any, anyone in the audience that this applies to, that would like to speak? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on the state. Second?
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of these properties, who would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is our planning agenda, Whitney Cook?
Yes, sir, we just have one item on the agenda tonight, it is the design review package for the new Serco headquarters, that's going to be, uh, on the north side of State Line Road, east of Gatwell Road. Uh, you'll recall, a few months back, we did a PUD here called Monahan Farms, uh, and it is proposed to have office, and small storage space, and residential office. What you see here is on Lot One, this will be the first thing you see coming into, uh, the city area, uh, from, from the north, from the Memphis area. Um, they've used the Niche panel boards, they've used ceramic tiles, they've used brick, um, it's got the wrought iron fencing, it's got the decorative lighting, it's got the landscaping, this is our third go at it. Uh, first couple ones were a little less than, um, exciting, so, uh, they did do all the corrections for us, uh, they appeased us on what we wanted to see, and, uh, this was the final outcome of that, planning commission did the, for unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve item number one on the button agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion?
That's a good looking building.
Should be a very good looking building.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you, next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Got several things tonight, I'm gonna try to move, uh, fairly quickly, uh, first of all, just announcing our Veterans Day luncheon, uh, is this Friday. Um, the Veterans Day luncheon, uh, just, if someone is going, just need to reserve a place with Chrissy Faulkner, uh, but it's gonna be at the Community Safe Room on Howie Fifty-One again, like it has been in previous years. Our guest speaker this year is, uh, DeSoto County Sheriff-elect Thomas Tuggle, uh, who is a, a combat veteran, a former Marine, that, uh, that served in combat, so he's gonna, uh, if you haven't heard, um, uh, Thomas speak, he's a, an impressive speaker, I'll, in fact, I, I vote him the, the most impressive speaker in DeSoto County, he, this guy can get your, uh, get your, your blood going, get you fired up, and, uh, he's gonna be a great sheriff for us. Uh, but he's got a great story to tell, and, uh, he, he's gonna be a good speaker for us on Friday. The, um, y'all know that in the past, uh, we've joined the county, the other cities in the, DeSoto County, in the, the imagery cost sharing, that's, you know, for our maps, you know, they, they fly that, um, do it in the, uh, usually in the winter months, when the leaves are off the trees, so they can, you know, capture the new streets and, and all that, Whitney uses it daily, don't you, Whitney? And, um, and then they're, they're proposing now to renew it again, um, we had decided, or, or thought in South Haven, Whitney, that doing it every two years was okay.
Yeah, it's not enough now.
It's not enough, that, no one else thinks it's enough either, so what they're proposing is that we join, uh, everybody, um, and they're gonna fly it like twice a year, they're gonna fly it in the, uh, in the winter months, and also fly it again, um, in the summer months, for like real estate agents, when they're trying to, you know, so, show a piece of property when it's at, at its most beautiful state. And so, anyway, they've asked, uh, for us to approve, um, Ila Branch, um, uh, had a deal, they had their own deal, cause they were wanting to do it more frequently than everybody else. So they're, they're not, it's not time for them to renew yet, so they would be out of it, but eventually they've indicated that they probably will join us, which will bring the cost down again, uh, but for now, basing it on population, if we join this, where we fly it, get it twice a year, um, it would be twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars, so if y'all are good with that, and wanna vote on that, I can let the county know that we'll participate in that with all the, the county. That's, that's annual, and that, that is doing a, um, uh, that is locking in a three-year, let me give you these numbers again. The twelve thousand nine forty-three is locking in a three-year deal, where it doesn't go up for three years, um, if we just do one year, it's ten thousand nine seventy-seven.
I'll make the motion for three years.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second Alderman Gallagher, any other dis- any discussion?
Who all has access to these?
It, it's used by so many different things, it's public, yeah.
It's the county website, a lot of people don't know.
Yeah, the, the GIS?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They tell me the GIS.
That's what it is. To the whole public.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's much needed, I just didn't know, and, and thank you for that, Whitney, but at one time, we thought, just trying to be efficient, we could do it every two years, but uh, the rest of the cities feel like it's needed every year, and you, you obviously do too.
Right now, in Silo Square, basically doesn't exist right now, that's really hard, when you're trying to research or investigate from a code enforcement standpoint, utility standpoint, I mean, it's, it's liable to have as much, it's up to you.
Okay, any other discussion? And Alderman Flores, again, uh, made the motion, and it was seconded that we, uh, participate and lock in that three-year price. Hearing no other discussion, roll call please?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that, that motion carries, uh, next, just wanna give you a brief update, y'all know that we finished our first concert season at our, uh, renovated amphitheater, um, and in past years, well, first of all, let me say this, we know that the amphitheater, the purpose of that, we, you know, people love concerts, you know, it, it accents our, um, our parks program, gives us something special there that nobody else, um, in this general area has access to, unless you get into downtown Memphis at the Mud Island, Mud Island, which, um, I don't even know how that's doing these days, but we've become the premier, uh, the Bank Plus Amphitheater in South Haven has become the premier outdoor entertainment venue in, you know, in North Mississippi and the Memphis metro. So, um, y'all know we made a major investment, we had our first year, the most concerts we'd ever had previously was eight, uh, this year we had twelve concerts. Um, basically, the amount of money that the city made in the past, generally, since its, um, creation, was about a hundred and fifty thousand. The most we ever made was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand in, um, I think it was two thousand eighteen, uh, when we had Santana at Spring Fest. But the, for the most part, we really never made more than two hundred thousand dollars a year. So this investment, the report to you tonight is, uh, and that's why we did this, you know, we hired, uh, contracted with, um, the, the CVB, uh, the same, uh, producer that's producing the concerts at the Landers Center, produced our concerts here, think you did a, a really good job, the whole team did a great job. So what this looks like is, in the first year, and we expect to do better, but, uh, we made six hundred and thirty-two thousand this year, and so it's what we projected would happen, we believe that it could be done in a better way, where the, the taxpayers would benefit from the revenues, and and like I started to say earlier, that's not our only purpose, I mean, we benefit economically so much by having those concerts, it brings quality of life to so many of our citizens, it's fun, uh, it causes growth around there, when the customers come in. A lot of people travel, you know, to these concerts, so they, you know, get a hotel room, they go to the restaurants, they, they buy gas, the whole, just the economic impact is tremendous. But the real dollars, what I want, and I know y'all wanted this too, I wanted to see the real dollars of this, be better in the South Haven taxpayers' favor, and the report tonight is we've done that, so we've taken it, from about a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year to six hundred and thirty-two thousand the first year, uh, we believe, believe that we will continue to build on that. Um, as I've reported to you in the past, we did have some upfront, uh, costs with, um, ancillary equipment and things like that, um, that have put us, you know, we didn't make money in year one, but, uh, those things will be offset, of our revenues as we continue going forward, so we'll, we'll definitely, uh, the report is this will be in the green, this will be a moneymaker for our city. Um, but anyway, I'll get the exact details, any questions about that? Um, some things we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna get into detailed discussions on the actual, uh, production, because there's some, you know, there's some confidential stuff with the artists there, um, but any, uh, specific questions about how we did and that, um, y'all reach out to me, you know, and I'll get you that information as well. So it's a good update tonight. We have, um, all three of these things kind of affect Ward Two, in the revitalization or redevelopment of the West End District, and I'm not, I could talk about this for an hour, but I'm, I'm gonna make it quick. Y'all know that the city, like every other city, when the older business districts in a city, um, as things evolve economically, demands and economic demands change in cities, and in our original bus, business district that was created in the early sixties at, at Main Street and Howie fifty-one, uh, we, we, uh, that's affected that. I mean, it started in the early nineteen nineties, you know, things started, as we started developing to the south and to the, uh, to the east, you know, a lot of business, uh, it changed the va, economic values, real estate values of this area. So a lot started going the other way, so we, I know as long as I've been mayor, that's been one of my priorities to try to revitalize the original business district, um, but contrary to what, uh, some of our citizens think, that is the most challenging thing for any city. You show me any city in America, and I'll show you that they have certain parts of their city, that are not as, in as high demand as others, that's just, it just, it's natural, it's not some miraculous formula that a, a new mayor in two thousand thirteen could fix. Um, I, I love original South Haven, I grew up in original South Haven. I would love it to be like it was in nineteen eighty-five, but that's never gonna happen again, um, but it can still be better than it is now. We, we did incentives in two thousand fourteen, um, for those, again, that don't think that we've done anything, we've done a lot. We did things in fourteen and fifteen to add every incentive, financial incentive that state law allows is in place, uh, to incentivize business to come back to this area, and contrary, again, to what some think, we have seen some success, I mean, I'll tell you right now, um, from two thou, from ninety-nine to two thousand eleven, I had a business office on Airways, and I came to State Line Road to eat at Top's Barbecue and some of the restaurants here to avoid the Goodman traffic. It, for years, it looked like a ghost town, it really did, you go on any day of the week and ride down Main Street and State Line now, the economy is better. I'm telling you, the consumer traffic flows are better, and I'm not just saying this to be an eternal optimist, but I believe that we still have great potential, of revitalizing the West End Business District. And so, we have seen improvements, um, but to, but to add to that, um, again, just listening to, you know, citizens and, and, and things, some ideas are good, some are not good, um, but one thing that, that we had hoped would happen in the past is that the Chamber of Commerce would have been more involved, and I'm not, I'm not here to criticize anybody, don't misunderstand me, but, we've asked the Chamber of Commerce to, to refocus on the West End. And, and like I was telling, uh, Debbie King, you know, when you're the, the Chamber of Commerce, you're everything business in your city, you're the doctor of business. And so, if you're the doctor, and there's a part of your body that's not doing as well as another, what would every doctor do? They would focus on that, wouldn't they? And so, what we're asking is the Chamber to really add emphasis to helping us, you know, really call attention, really promote the incentives, uh, no, understand, even though it's on the website, and we try to put it everywhere, there's some people that still don't know that we have the incentives. So that we've asked the Chamber of Commerce to help her, help us, they're gonna do that, and we're just trying to, again, kick up the dust again, just try to bring attention back to this. We're not gonna work any miracles, no one's gonna come out and say, you know what, I think I'm gonna go invest, fifty million dollars on Main Street, because Mayor Musso White talked about it in a meeting, that, that's not gonna happen. I can't make it happen, but we can stir the interest back up, and s, and, and start talking about it again, and, and bring awareness to it again. And so, I tell y'all that to say, we're kicking off another campaign to do some things differently, to try to revitalize and redevelop the West End. And so, um, we have a committee, the Chamber of Commerce has helped us, uh, set up a committee that's gonna focus on that, and a lot of that is, uh, step one is, again, just bringing awareness, if, it means going door to door, knocking on a current business owner's door, and say, hey, did you know, did you know you can, you know, replace this sign and get an incentive, or, or get a, a leniency, or you can, you know, do an investment in your building and get a tax abatement, no, no fees, no tap, water and sewer tap fees, no, no building permit fees, you, you get exemption from all this if you'll reinvest in our West End. So, we're gonna get this committee, to kind of rally the troops, and hopefully we'll get some of our current business owners in the West End to actually serve on the committee, and to get involved, and just to, there to be ownership of, of this again, and, uh, we start a Facebook page, so if you haven't, uh, liked that, um, I wrote the, the entry, um, it, go read the entry, that's a synopsis of where, how we started, you know, where things were in the nineteen seventies, where they were in the eighties, where they were in the nineties, and the decades that have followed, so go read that and, and share that for us and help us, you know, get that going, and I encourage all the citizens to do that as well, because, we all have the same goal, we want the whole city to do well, like, you know, I get accused of, that I love one part of the city more than another occasionally, and it, and it's so ridiculous, it's just absolutely asinine, because, for one, if you're gonna accuse me that, I probably love this area better than the other, to be honest with everybody, because it's my home, I have a lot of sentimental feelings about it, but the bottom line is, mayor, I have to pay attention, and y'all do as well, even though you represent specific wards, it affects every ward, our entire city depends on our entire city. So like, when we have success in one part of our city, everybody in our city benefits from that. Same thing as if we're having challenges in one part of our city, it, it may not be, we may not be feeling it right now, but eventually it's gonna affect everybody in the city. So it's important for all of us to have an interest in the redevelopment of the West End District, so, I just say all this tonight, just again, to, to kick the dust back up and to encourage everybody to be positive, you know, not to say, well, you know, this used to look like this in nineteen eighty-five. I know what it used to look like in nineteen eighty-five, and I'd love for it to look like that again, I'd love for it to be better than that. I would, I, nothing would have made me happier if Snowden Grove Park was built on, on State Line Road, I would have loved that. I, I wish, um, Cherry Valley Park looked like Snowden Grove Park, I loved it, but, things are developed, it didn't develop that way, there's so many other contingencies that went into that. The land was donated at Snowden, if the land had been available over here, we may have Snowden Grove Park over here. But these are things that, there's so many other factors that have determined this, but we can't be negative about it, we need to all embrace it for the health of our entire city. So I hope that the board and everybody, uh, that may be watching tonight, I hope that you'll, uh, hear this and, and get on board in a positive way, and, and help us stir this thing back up and try to, you know, make some progress in the redevelopment of our West End. Any, any questions about that before I move on? By the way, I got two other things.
I think that's great, I'd like to be part of that, uh, board.
We appreciate that. Um, and again, speaking of the West End, so, not, again, not to crown people's shoulder, but the things that you see me advocate for are things that, you, you know, we know our citizens have different opinions, and, and so, I listen to all of our citizens, and, and I get some good ideas, but, but I don't advocate for everything, because everything I hear is not a good idea, okay, so, but there's one thing that really hits home with me, and, and I gotta share that with y'all tonight, so like, when people hear me talk, just like I did about, you know, the way, uh, Howie fifty-one and Dorchester Drive looked at some point in our history, or, or fifty-one and Main Street, and I tell them that, that y'all are on board with me, and we care about redevelopment, and we care about beautification, and all these things, and we're, we got our code enforcement officers working hard and all, and then they said, well, why do you have, why do you allow this building, like this, in this condition, to sit here for eight to ten years? Nothing's changed in eight to ten, eight to ten years, nothing's, the whole time you've been mayor, nothing's changed, it's looked the same way yesterday as it looked when you took office on June twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen. And you know what my answer to that is? I don't, I have a pro, I, you, you got me, I don't have a good, I don't have a good answer for that. I, I'm, I'm ashamed to say I don't have a good answer for that. Well, and so my team, when I say my team, all our department heads, um, in our court is still my team, even though I don't, I don't, you know, make decisions in the court, but I go to them and I say, why has nothing changed? The same thing my citizen just told me, I'm, I'm sending the question back to you, why has nothing changed with this? Why have we not modified the behavior of these people that are violating our codes in the same, um, uh, just horrible condition, uh, properties, the same as it has been? And we get into, that gets complicated, get into all kinds of things, but I, I say all that to lead you to, the old Howie Baptist Church property, and y'all know that we had a gentleman in here a few meetings back that came in and, and, uh, made some comments about why it's in that condition. Uh, we have been trying for years to change the condition of that property, and, and nothing has changed. I mean, I, I understand that they paid their fees, or whatever, but nothing has changed, and we've not asked anyone to do anything that's unreasonable, but we're at a situation now where I have to answer to our citizens, why does it look like that? Why have y'all not done anything about that? And so, again, not to get into the weeds about why they haven't done it, but the bottom line is, it's time for us to do something about it. What's, what we're doing now is not working, so it's time for us to demol, to condemn that property and demolish that. And, um, and I, and so we're having our team, uh, fire marshal, everybody's going in, looking at the condition of it, it's in horrific, the buildings, the old gym, uh, the buildings that I guess used to be Sunday School Buildings are in horrific, or the school, school, it used to be a school too, are in horrific condition, so, uh, I'm gonna be bringing that back to y'all with a request to condemn that property. And, um, because it's a high-profile location, our citizens wanna know why we've done nothing about it, it's time that we do something about that. So I want y'all to be thinking about that, because that's gonna be back in front of you in the very near future, and we'll have a lot of data, you know, to provide to you as well. Any questions about that before I move on?
Is there anything operating in that facility at all?
There hasn't been anything operating there in, in years, I know people that went to school there, I mean, Howie Baptist Academy was a great place, the church, was a great place back in the nineteen seventies, and, uh, know lots of people that went to church there and went to school there, but, um, but no, it's not being, not, I, I don't know what they're telling, Whitney, I don't know what they're saying, but I can tell you, there's not, I mean, look at the building, I don't even know if it's safe to go in any of the buildings.
They're trying to say that they're occupied for church, we haven't found the evidence of that, uh, it's, it's just a, a couple, that basically is maintaining it as, I guess, as best they can, but it's not, it's become a safety hazard at this point.
Yeah.
We get a lot of complaints on it, so.
And if any of the owners or their attorneys are watching tonight, my door is wide open, I've been pleading to talk to these people for, so if they wanna come talk to me, if we got a better solution, I wanna hear it, but just doing nothing and nothing changing is not acceptable, we gotta do something different, so. All right, so the, um, the next thing that, uh, is related, and this is the last thing, that's related to our West End, is Cherry Valley Park. You know, I mentioned Cherry Valley Park, um, I'll go ahead and tell you, I've, I've, I've used this term to west. Um, Cherry Valley Park is hallowed ground in South Haven, Mississippi. And if, and if you don't understand why, then ask somebody, um, if you're too young to understand that, ask somebody. Cherry Valley Park is hallowed ground in South Haven, Mississippi. There have been so many lives changed by Cherry Valley Park, so many great memories, I mean, they're just, they're just countless and countless people, uh, that either played baseball there, football there, cheerleading there, had a brother that played there, a sister that played there, uh, uh, son or daughter that played, coached, whatever, we could go on and on and on. Um, the demise of youth football, again, we could talk about this for hours, but fall baseball and soccer, the involvement in so, and there's nothing bad about that, but they have killed youth football in our city. So it's not too many years ago that every age classification, we had six to seven South Haven teams. We have, we're lucky to have one team per age group, like two year, like seven and eights, nine, tens, elevens, twelves, we're lucky if we can put together one team now. We have tried everything under the sun to kick back interest up, uh, as y'all may know, we have a, a former NFL defensive end, um, uh, Delwan Robinson that works for us in our Parks Office, he played five years for the Houston Texans. We sent him in his Houston Texans jersey to the elementary schools to, to try to drum up interest, to get the kids handing out flyers, try to get kids involved. So we've done about everything in the world we know of to kick, to kick back up our football program, but where that leads to this discussion is, Cherry Valley Park's rarely being used anymore, it's just, it's just, it's sad, knowing what it used to be, and, um, a, and so, I'm just, I just can't accept the way it is right now, we just gotta keep brainstorming to make it something better. We've had people that have brought some ideas together on things that could be there, again, some of those ideas are not good ideas, uh, some are good. So, what I wanna see us do is continue fighting to try to bring back football. Uh, and by the way, I'm gonna get off on a little tangent here, if you're a fall, if you're a youth baseball coach, and you tell a ten-year-old kid that you don't have a spot for him in the spring unless he plays for you in the fall, and he doesn't play football because of that, you need to quit coaching youth sports, because you're part of, you're a big part of the problem, so if you're watching tonight, um, that's, that's some advice straight from a former youth coach and player, um, quit doing that. Um, but anyway, that's kind of what we face with, so we're gonna keep trying to stir the interest back up with football, but I think Cherry Valley can be better than it is, it's hallowed ground, yeah, we're gonna stick a historical marker sign there, because, it's never gonna be what it was in the seventies and eighties, and even nineties, it's not gonna be that anymore, but it can be something better than it is right now. And so, we're gonna keep, uh, working to try to find that, so, one of the specific ideas that we're researching, y'all know that we've had people, uh, talk about the skate park, um, and we, I still stand by the decision to close the skate park where it was, was the right decision. However, we're looking into possibly, there's new parks out there that are, uh, that can incorporate both, uh, like a bike park and a skate park together. And so, we've got, uh, some people researching that for us now, so, um, something that wouldn't be overly expensive, uh, we do face a serious vandalism risk at Cherry Valley Park now, it's just, it's just, bottom line facts, um, but I'm gonna be bringing something back in front of you again, to start the redevelopment of Cherry Valley Park, and, and, again, don't have a comprehensive plan laid out for you, uh, one of the thoughts that we've discussed at some point is bringing adult softball, to Cherry Valley, I still think that's a good idea, um, but I'm thinking we could, um, you know, take the advice of some of the citizens and maybe start small, maybe bring back a bike skate park and see how that works, you know, maybe, um, use some of the new technology with cameras, you know, to help, uh, minimize the vandalism, stuff like that, um, possibly put a gate, you know, to monitor the, the, uh, the traffic after dark there. Uh, we have a lot of bad things that go on after dark there now, unfortunately. Um, but anyway, I just wanna warm y'all up to that and let you know, I'm gonna be bringing something in front of you to start the revitalization of Cherry Valley Park in some form or fashion.
Mayor, I would like to, uh, add something, I mean, it would be nice if we could start locking that park up after dark.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, you know, closing the gates and maybe have, you know, the guy that does the arena, maybe when he get, when he gets off.
We, we've, yeah, Wes, Wes agrees with you, and, and we've talked about that, and, uh, and, you know, we've thrown a lot of things around, you know, had some meetings with Chief Moore and Wes together, and, um, again, we gotta be careful that we don't duplicate mistakes, you know, you don't wanna keep, you know, repeating the same mistake, but we believe that there could be, you know, some things we can't do that would be, bring more negative than good, but there's, you know, the old saying, don't let what you can do stop you from doing what you can. You know, I think that we need to focus on that, there's some things that I believe we can do, and, um, you know, that's one thing that will allow us to, you know, to have positive change there is to use a gate, and, um, and then I think there's some, you know, modern cameras that we can use that, that have more functions that, uh, previous technology didn't have, that could help us, we're not gonna put a police officer there twenty-four seven and guard the park. I mean, I've had people that, that expect us to do that, the answer is no, we're not gonna do that, that doesn't make good sense. But there are the, some of these other things that we can do that I think that help us manage the negatives and make it a positive thing, yeah. But I appreciate you saying that about the gate, that is definitely something that we'll do sooner than later, yeah. Um, another, just, and we'll move topics, but the other thing is, you know, um, we're not gonna put a police officer there twenty-four seven, but we could, focus on having, you know, a Parks employee that specializes more in Cherry Valley Park, find the right person, you know, that could, you know, possibly be involved in, you know, you know, having better eyes on the park, you know, during the daytime hours, and then at night, lock it, and then use the cameras at night, but, um.
And I've, I've, I've had a lot of positive to the adult softball, putting, you know, a few fields out there for that, they, they think that would be a.
I mean, it was originally, it was originally baseball field.
It was, yeah.
And I think that would bring a lot more people back over to the west side too.
Well, one thing, and I agree with you, and, and that's the hope, um, I will say that, one thing, I mentioned fall baseball and soccer that, that killed our football program there, but, the other thing is, um, as our county grew, you know, and the other cities like Ala Branch developed their football program, Hernando, you know, developed their football program, Hernando, you know, their football programs weren't like. Cherry Valley Football in its heyday was the thing. Nobody in DeSoto County competed with Cherry Valley Football. And, but the other cities have added leagues, you know, our population again has grown and spread out more. So we have some people that don't, they don't want, it's out of their way. They don't wanna go back to Cherry Valley. So, but I do think if we could do adult softball, that may, you know, may be something that would work there. But thanks for those comments. I know it's long tonight, but that's some stuff that I'm very passionate about. And, and I know a lot of our citizens are. I, I know that they are. So I, I hope that y'all will forgive me for being a little long-winded this evening about that. But the good news is the mayor's report is over. All right, so next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, move. We approve the personnel docket as presented on this date.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Nothing tonight. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have two claims dockets.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the claim docket number one in the amount of four million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents, including demand tags.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne on docket one, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve docket two?
Mr. Mayor, move. We approve docket number two in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne on docket two, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.[1698.91]